Who is excused? First on our agenda here is a discussion on what will only in Phase Three, the East State Street Bid Award. And so there, we've received some new information on that, given the complexity of the bid and the funding sources. I'm going to turn it over to the mayor for some further explanation.
Okay. Last week when we talked about this, I gave you some misinformation. So, because both bids were over the announced budget, we can, we have to award the bid to the lowest bid, which would be, if you see from this, this would be Millennium Contracting. Now, once the bid is awarded, then we can work with Millennium Contracting on the alternate bids. Okay? So, that is, that is, I did talk to our engineering firm, I did, we did talk, he did talk to Chris Church from DOT, and so that's the way we have to go. So, but, so, we'll give, I guess, we can give that until, well, we can't vote on it tonight, because we didn't vote, but we'll get her back on the agenda for two weeks to vote on.
Yeah, so just as a clarification, so due to the fact that both bids were over our allotted funding sources to the project itself, so based on that, Millennium Contracting, the base bid of 2.773 million would be awarded. Alderman Benyon?
What, Bill, can you explain the difference? Does it say the lowest bid or the lowest responsible? Can you just clarify that?
I think we look at the lowest bidder. But anywhere on that thing, it's the most, it's the lowest responsible bidder. But when they meet all the criteria, then you have, you know, in this case, Millennium was, is the lowest, and they're a good firm, and the, our, what was it? Lobella, Lobella, they, they, Church from DOT also said everything was accurate, so that would be, the pertinent bid would be with Millennium.
Alderman Anastasia?
John, this $2.7 million, is, is that city funding that we got from up with, or is there a partial grant? Can you take something off of that total?
Yeah, we do have, most of that is funded. Bill, do you have the numbers?
We have a total of 2.129372, okay, in funding. That's DRI funds of 1.2, TAP funds of 663,498, a local match on the TAP, 165,874, national grid, $100,000, that comes to 2,129,372.
We could look into, for this project, to make up even the difference, let's just call it around 500, half a million dollar difference, could we utilize any of our CHIPS monies to go into this, if any work is being done on the street or curbing?
That I'll have to check with Dave Crandall, so.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I just wanted to consider local management, you can probably have a million dollars.
And that was, that is on the TAP line. It was 80, 20 on the TAP line, and that's where that, that's the local match for the TAP, and that was previously approved.
So, the 164 is the local match, correct?
Yeah, 165, 87.
Okay, 165, then the overrun of approximately half a million dollars, 500 dollars.
And then, remember, there's also 361,000 for the inspection, with all the help for us there.
Yeah. That would come out of the city, the additional difference between the 1.2 and the 2.7, okay? So, that would be 600,000. And now, we would also be looking at and face with the inspection services that has not been funded, which is roughly around 300,000. So, I think you could probably call it a million dollars, just with the base bid. So, this actually might be a good opportunity for us to all kind of rethink process, and then we can always enter into future negotiations with change orders, you know, needs versus wants on the project scope, whether we still are looking at doing, you know, wanting all the alternates, some question that, that was brought up to me, is, you know, that's a state road, for Millennium paving its own road, you know, and is that something that we could negotiate with, you know, and ask the state to do? Do you have any idea, Bill?
Well, yeah, because we do get, it's called, we do get money from the state, it's, it's, deal with the lane, it's, well, they pay us for us to take care of the roads, okay? And we got into this when we did, we had to do underneath the underpass and all that. They, arterial, arterial lane money we get, we don't get a lot, but I think it's our obligation to take care of it. But I believe one of the oftenest was for Millennium paving, so I'll check with Dave Crandall, because we may be able to uncover that under our CHIPS money.
So, there might be some opportunities to save and still accomplish what we want to do.
Yeah, the other concern I had too is, I remember from last week, we were talking about this, and you said there was no infrastructure work being done over there, and that's, to me, that's, that's a lot of money to put into a road without doing any infrastructure work. There's, you know, man, well, I want your road to be done, and it's nice, some utility's going to come in there and dig it up, so it's just, I don't know, I'm just kind of sort of wondering where the money's kind of.
Any other questions? All right, so this is just a discussion item, the updated PL resolution will be on for our next regular meeting, which will be March 12th. All right, moving along, we have PL is an unlisted action, and then after full review of the short environmental assessment form determines that the project will not result in any significant adverse impacts and therefore issues in any declaration in accordance with the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act. Mr. Mayor?
As we talked last, last week in committee, this is just the next, one of the next steps. It's not committing us to do the project, but we, it gets, it gets the, it gets this out of the way, so we can move forward.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, Alderman Robinson, would you like to sponsor?
Motion, yep.
Okay, Alderwoman McCall, seconded, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carried. PL 22-24 by Mayor Elio, authorize the implementation and funding in the first instance, 100% of the federal aid and state, pardon, should allow me?
Yeah.
The East State Street project. Mr. Mayor?
This is the money to accept the TAP money at 600 and some, whatever it is, I got in there, but that's, this is the resolution that we have to pass in order to get that in. In there is also our 20%, this, this was never done, and we have to get that done and move forward with it. Walk alone, number three.
Just a question, if we accept this, Mayor, and we somehow don't go through the project, we have to give the money back, or how's that work?
If we don't go through with it?
Correct.
I believe so, yeah. We'll lose them, I guess.
But this isn't giving okay for the project, right?
We haven't accepted any bids, that's next step, so that, I mean, if you're asking, when's your, when's the deadline to cut off on whether we can go or not, that would be, what'd I tell you, March, March 12th.
Are you, are you asking, like, if we accept this, does it lock it in the project, or say the project's guaranteed? Is that what you're trying to figure out?
No, I mean, the money would be given back to the entity if the project did not pass. Okay? Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a sponsor. I'll make the motion, could I get a second? Seconded by Alderwoman Forney, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carried, and is referred to tonight's regular meeting. PL 26-24 by Mayor Elio, 25 adopted state budget. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, this is a resolution that ICOM is asking all municipalities to sponsor and put in, and send, and send it to our elected officials in Albany, urging them to increase the Ames funding.
That's something that hasn't been increased in a long time, right?
In 20, 20 some years now.
Yeah. So, any questions?
And just as a reminder, Ames is our unrestricted state aid.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a sponsor.
I'll sponsor.
All right, motion's made, can I get a second?
I'm sorry.
Seconded by Alderman Anastasia, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carried, is referred to tonight's regular meeting. PL 27-24 by Mayor Elio, to award the EV charging station project to Bamboo Strategy Group and Calcur Electric Electrical Contract. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, after bids were in, to go with, the good thing is, it is a local company, so they, they will be providing us with guidance and on the EVC charging stations, which, just to recall, will be, will be 20 of them, I believe, 10 on Union Street, in front of the mall, and 10 in the parking lot at First and Sullivan Street.
That's right. So, this, can you give us an idea as far as the financing goes? We did apply for a grant through New York State, we got awarded that funding, and the, the award here, what, does that come in under the grant, is it?
This is, this is 100% financed, 100% funded by the state.
Okay. Any comments or questions? I'm excited to see this moving forward, just, you know, with everything that we have going on in our city, I think this can only help further develop our downtown, certainly from tourism perspective, and grow our hospitality industry, and support our restaurants, and hopefully, eventually, as we, we see the development of the Oleand Center Mall and its new future, so I, I think this synergy from this project is going to be really, really important going forward, tonight's regular meeting. Next up, we've got PL 28-24 by Mayor Elio, to amend Resolution 22-23, to amend closing amounts for various capital funds, as well as to keep Capital Fund 193, Washington Street open. Mr. Mayor?
Let's.
Let's.
This is mostly housekeeping. Last year, when we voted on the first capital project to be called and transfer funds, the number that I gave you was on the order in the numbers, so we have the order in ones last week, so everything is done, everything is in code, but now we have to go back and amend the resolution and make sure we have it in the record. And we have to keep Capital Project 193 open, because we still haven't been open on that project until we transfer that thing to a fund, we have to develop.
All right, I, I reviewed the, the figures earlier, I mean, a variety of different accounts are kind of being hit here, well, not hit, three different accounts, okay? Three different funds, but nothing, I mean, material, nothing, no, no massive changes there. Okay? Any comments or questions? Yeah, Alderman Robinson?
You said there were three accounts?
Yeah, the general fund balance, the water fund balance, and the debt service fund. Is that right, Bones?
Correct, yeah. And those other three entries already were made from the, from, obviously, this year, the capital grid maybe.
Okay, so this just updates our accounting software.
For the workers, 2,150.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, can I get a sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
All right, motion's made by Alderman Benyon, I'll second, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carried, is referred to tonight's regular meeting. I'll make a motion to adjourn our Committee of the Whole, can I get a second? Seconded by Alderman Benyon, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carried. We're adjourned. I'll call the order to regular meeting.
Alderman Panis? Alderwoman Forney?
Here.
Alderwoman McCall?
Here.
Alderman Robinson?
Here.
Alderman Anastasia?
Here.
President Crawford?
Here, please rise to meet in location and the question.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bond of this community. In your name we pray.
Amen. Apologies to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which sustains all the nation, our God, indivisible, and the great justice for all. Reading, correcting, approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting?
Regular meeting of the Oleand Council was held on Tuesday, February 13th, 2024, at 15:00 PM. Present, were Alderman Crawford, Benyon, Panis?
Forney, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carried. Committee reports on unfinished council business.
None.
Communication from the mayor.
Thank you. Several years ago, during the budget process, we used to include $15,000 for mosquito spray, and back then, it was, it was decided that, you know, we, we didn't use it, so it was taken out of the budget with the idea that if we have to spray for mosquitoes, we could take it out of contingency. So, it's that time of year again where we have to make a commitment to the Cataract County Health Department to be included in the mosquito spraying process if it happens, if it comes about. So, I'm just asking your permission to sign this and get it back in, and then if we have a bad year, we spray for mosquitoes, then we would be billed for it.
Any comments or questions? Yeah, I think that's, I think that, I think we collectively agree, we can go ahead and join that.
Okay, thank you. And that's all we have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Miscellaneous communications?
None.
City official reports?
None.
Proposed legislation and referrals?
PL 17-24 by Mayor Elio, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, for resolution by Council President. PL number 18-24 by Mayor Elio, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, for resolution by Council President. PL number 19-24 by Mayor Elio, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, March 12th, 2024, for resolution by Council President. PL 20-24 by Mayor Elio, referred to Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, February 27th, 2024, by Council President. PL number 22-24 by Mayor Elio, referred to Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, February 27th, 2024, by Council President. PL number 23-24 by Mayor Elio, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, February 27th, 2024, for resolution by Council President. PL number 24-24 by Mayor Elio, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, February 27th, 2024, for resolution by Council President. PL number 25-24 by Mayor Elio, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, February 27th, 2024, for resolution by Council President. PL number 26-24 by Mayor Elio, referred to Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, February 27th, 2024, by Council President. And PL 28-24 by Mayor Elio, referred to Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, February 27th, 2024, by Council President.
All right, so before I open it up for public comment, I'd like to give an opportunity to any members of the council to make a statement at this time. Seeing none, old clerk, please read your public comment statement.
The public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, voice their concerns, or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city department heads encourage any personal questions to contact them at their offices.
Okay, at this time, I will open it up for public comment, I'd invite any members of the public to approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes.
Hello, council, my name is Robert Hunt, I'm a citizen, I live at 3305 Pennsylvania Road in Oleand, New York. I'm also a active member of 92 Astro LLC that owns the building on the corner at 103 South Berry and 202 East State Street. And my concern is, the ball's rolling for this project, has asked me to speak in his behalf, Brett Sikora, how is this going to affect the law office when the, the work is done? Legal assistance of Western New York, they've been there for like 30 years, they're right on the corner, how are these people going to be able to enter and exit there while the work's being done? Has there been any financial consideration to secure entering and exiting that area, or have you even thought about?
So, just to give you a little information, typically, this is not kind of a Q and A, this is, you know, make your public comment.
I understand.
If, what I would suggest, that if you have specific questions that you'd like answers to and follow up, you can either reach out to the respective Alderman or the mayor's office, who can help give you a kind of an idea of the project.
Hi, I'm Tim Sherlock, I live at 125 South 18th Street, here in Oleand. Recently, I got a notice about the tree ordinance, section 21-62. I did contact the mayor's office, who talked about the tree committee. I did reach out to figure out about the tree committee, only to be found, told that they really haven't done anything in two years. Need a little more research. This law is the most absurd tactic of playground toddler BS I've ever seen in my life. And the excuse I got was, well, you can't expect the city to pay for every one of its city trees, we'd go bankrupt. That phrase in that sentence, the city paid for city trees, says it all. I am told, I cannot touch the property that is the subway, I cannot dig, change, interface, interact, prohibit, stop, impede, because it is city property. Now, if I want to touch said tree, because I don't like the shade or whatnot, I must ask permission of the city to touch their city property. But once that tree is deemed hazardous, meaning it causes an issue, well, then, my friend, it is your responsibility as the homeowner. Make that make sense. So, if my house has an electrical issue, but it's in the city limits, I'll just build a city, I don't want to deal with it, because it's not fun for me anymore. It's the mentality, I'm on the playground, I'm playing with the truck, it's brand new, it's fabulous, you may pay me, you may look at it, you may not touch it, I make the rules. It is broken now, oh, I'll let you have a turn. This ordinance makes absolutely no sense, I'll even go further with it. We're told no structures, no this, no that, but you may ask for a waiver from the council in certain subjects. We had a woman come for a fence, a see-through chain link fence, due to harassment, she was forced to take it down, because, and I quote, an Alderman said, "We cannot arbitrarily pick and choose when we will or will not enforce these if-must structures are built on the subways in the forms of gardens, raised flower beds, et cetera, they're a violation." We are picking and choosing exactly what we choose to do. Even further, I'm a taxpayer, my taxes go to the maintenance and funding of the city, your job, but you're telling me to pay for it, I've already done paid for it. Then I sit here and listen to when we first already voted on this project, to everyone saying, "It'll be of no cost to the citizens." It got shot down, we come back to it, be of no cost to the citizens. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we got to come up with a million dollars to make that puppy work. Who's funding that? Half of our residents live in poverty. Where's that money going to come from? Let's just shift it some more. Now, some of you are my friends, and I think very highly of you, some of you I don't know. But the one really reoccurring theme here is something that happens all the time, a bunch of people who are well off don't care. What happens to the old lady who owns her house at 92, or 86, on a fixed income, and that tree's hazardous? You're going to bill her, whether she can't afford it, you're going to slap that on her taxes like you do other costs in the city, because we're helping you? Because what I see is, the majority of our citizens don't pay attention, as you know, they don't come here, but a few of us, so we just love it, they won't know, we'll sweep it away, we'll shift the cost, we'll play the cup game. Well, I'm going to tell you, I'm not paying, I hire, if they don't like them, they can't do the job, and I have to pay a permit for them. Make it make sense. The Constitution of the federal government says equality in many of the amendments, even equal protections under the 14th Amendment, where no government should form any law that is unjust to anybody, without official due process.
You have over the five minutes, Sherlock.
I urge you to bring your tree committee back and review this ordinance, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Extra time. At this time, I'll call public comment votes. Financing bills?
The auditor has processed those claims against the city of Oleand, Oleand, as took Oleand totaling $1,946,359.25 for the budget, and recommends payment thereof. Now, therefore, be it resolved, that the same be, and are hereby audited and allowed, and that, and the auditor is hereby authorized and directed to draw warrants for the payment thereof at the amount set opposite each respective claim.
All right, we've all received our financing bills, does anyone have any questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
All right, motion's made by Alderman McCall, seconded by Alderwoman Forney. Mr. Clerk, please call the whip.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney?
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes, six ice and nade. Resolution number 4-24, PL number 3-24, to amend the city of Oleand Code of Ordinances to include section 6-30 and sections 6-275 through 6-28.
Okay, all right, all right, okay, I just wanted to check. We've all received a copy of this update, that will, again, just an additional step towards putting, putting stronger. towards putting, putting stronger, you know, regulations on and maintenance of the vacant buildings around our communities, and so we've all received this. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a sponsor. Motion's made by Alderman Benyon?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman McCall. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Forney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes, six eyes and nays. Resolution number seven dash twenty-four, PL number six dash twenty-four by Alderman Forney, seconded by Alderman Benyon, to amend the city of Oleane Code of Ordinances section thirteen dash two eight thirty, to amend the license fee for vendors to twelve dollars per day.
Okay, we talked about this last week in committees, any comments or questions? Seeing none, old clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Who?
I'm sorry. Alderman Forney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes, six eyes and nays. Resolution eighteen dash twenty-four, PL number twenty dash twenty-four, out of committee by Alderman Robinson, seconded by Alderman McCall, that the common council as lead agency determines that Marcus Park Improvements Project is in enlisted action and that after full review of the short environmental assessment form determines that the project will not result in any significant.
All right, we just talked about this, any comments or questions? Alderman Anastasia?
The only thing I'm, like I say, John, is I'm going to vote in favor of this because there's no financial constraints attached to this resolution, but, and I don't want to delay the progress because that presentation last week with Marcus Park was beautiful, it was second to none, it would be a beautiful thing for the city, but when, when we originally talked about this, we were going to give fifty thousand dollars towards playground equipment, and now the project for the city share is going to be about one point six million. So I'm not voting no on this because I don't want to hold anything up because I know you guys are trying to seek additional funding from other sources, but I just don't know how we're going to come up with one point six million dollars for that part, that's the only comment I'd like to make.
I think that's a valid point, Alderman Anastasia, and I, I do believe that, I think most of us are probably in agreement with you, you know, that's, that's a big ask for just the city to, to take on itself and, and I do think that we need to continue working within tandem to pursue additional funding sources, at least that's my opinion. Any other comments or questions on this? Okay, thank you. Well, the clerk, who's called, what the roll?
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes, six eyes and nays. Resolution number twenty dash twenty-four, PL twenty-two dash twenty-four, out of committee by Alderman Crawford, seconded by Alderman Forney, to authorize the implementation and funding in the first instance, one hundred percent of the federal aid and state Marchesselli program paid eligible costs of a transportation federal aid project and appropriating funds therefore for the walkable Oleane Phase Three East State Street project.
Okay, talked about this one too, any comments or questions? Seeing none, old clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Forney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes, six eyes and nays. Resolution number twenty-one dash twenty-four, PL number twenty-three dash twenty-four, to authorize, authorize purchase of a fire engine from the city of Salamanca Fire Department.
All right, we pursued this request and presentation, I think, last week if I'm not mistaken, so, well, any comments or questions on this? Alderman Robinson?
How much was that against, not written in the PL?
I think it was forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
Which is actually a price that is below the, the market value of what the chief said. Okay? Okay, anything further? Need some sponsors?
I'll sponsor.
All right, motion is made by Alderman Anastasia, seconded by Alderman McCall. Old clerk, who's call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Forney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-four, PL twenty-four dash twenty-four, to authorize the mayor to submit a grant application to the Department of Homeland, Homeland Securities Federal Emergency Management Agency under the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program for funding associated, for funding associated with the purchase of three automatic compression devices.
All right, the chief gave us a presentation for this as well, any comments or questions? Okay, so, just to let Alderman Anastasia know, if we receive this grant, the local share cost will be three thousand seven. It's today's exchange rate. So, any comments or questions? I'll entertain a sponsor.
I'll sponsor.
All right, sponsor is made by Alderman Robinson and seconded by Alderman Benyon. Okay, well, the clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Forney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes, six eyes and nays. Resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-four, PL twenty-five dash twenty-four, to authorize the mayor to submit a grant application to the Department of Homeland Securities, Homeland Securities Federal Emergency Management Agency under the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two Assistance to Fire.
Any comments or questions on this one? Alderman McCall?
So, I think if I, if memory serves me, that this would be based on our current vehicles and that next year we would be able to take into account the purchase from the Salamanca one, is that accurate, to be able to get a better score? Or lessons?
You know what, I'm not sure if the chief said that, his, the application has to be in and now that we purchased it or authorized the purchase, I hope we may be able to use that.
That's what I was hoping.
That's what he said. That's what I thought he said.
He said in the email that he could use the VIN number so that way it's that old date of whatever year that truck was.
Perfect.
Is what was stated in that original email.
Okay.
Right, and I think, just for clarification sake, I think having that older fighter truck from Salamanca would improve our score, scoring on this grant application to better our standing to, to try to get this money. Okay. Any other comments or questions? So if we were awarded the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Alderman Anastasia, the five percent local share cost would be thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
That's a good deal.
U.S. currency?
That's a good deal for a fighter truck. My car costs over that.
Not everybody has the pension you have, Alderman Anastasia. All right, can I get some sponsors?
I'll sponsor.
Benyon?
I'll sponsor.
McCall?
You're sponsoring, I never really know.
I know, she's on for reelection.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Forney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes, six eyes and nays. Resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-four, PL twenty-six dash twenty-four, out of committee by Alderman Robinson and seconded by Alderman Anastasia, to urge Governor Hochul to work with the leaders of the Senate and Assembly and increase CAIM funding in the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five adopted state budget.
Okay, we just talked about this, any comments, questions, seeing none, old clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Forney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alder, Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
And Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes, six eyes and nays. Resolution number twenty-six dash twenty-four, PL number twenty-eight dash twenty-four, out of committee by Alderman Benyon, seconded by President Crawford, to amend Resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-three, to amend closing amounts for the various capital funds as well as to keep Capital Fund number one ninety-three Washington Street open.
All right, any comments or questions on this one? Seeing none, old clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Forney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Executive session to discuss the medical financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the employment of the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal or removal of a particular person or corporation. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Benyon.